Which one?
Well, member one to the Thursday, September nineteenth regular meeting of the Clear Lake City Council. Madam Clerk, can you please be rolling?
Councilmember Sutton.
Here.
Councilmember Pirda.
Here.
Councilmember Kramer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Overton.
Here.
And Mayor Conkey.
Here. I'm Lieutenant, can you leave it from the question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You please remain standing for a moment. A few weeks ago, we had a fire that decimated thirty homes in our community. First, I want to thank everyone who stepped up, our first responders, our business owners, our community leaders, our utilities, all came together when we needed it the most. But right now, we have thirty families that are going through probably the hardest time in their life, so let's take a moment and think about that. Thank you, ma'am. To the man in the floor, any changes to the agenda?
Um, yeah, what we can do with the consent agenda, so you can approve it as soon as you can.
Okay. So, a motion from councilmember Pirda, a second from councilmember Kramer, please vote me in your favor. Aye.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number one, presentation of September's adoptable dogs.
Done on that, there we go. Hello, everybody. So for this month's adoptable dog, we brought Goofy. He is a year and a half, little mix. Goofy can be shy at first, but once he gets to know you, his beautiful personality shines through. Goofy loves water and enjoys cooling off on hot days. He's also excellent on leash. Goofy loves snuggles, he'll make a perfect companion. He has shown to do well with other dogs, but we aren't sure how he is for class. Goofy is neutered, microchipped, and up to date on all vaccinations, all that he's missing from his line of view. Come meet Goofy in all of our other wonderful dogs that we have available for adoption. We're open at nine AM, six PM, and we're located at six eight two zero, Highway fifty-three. I think I've just known this enough times.
Thank you, madam. Counsel. In saying today, further sheltered than three hundred twenty-one dogs. Two hundred seventy-three left sheltered, including forty-nine rescued, a hundred ninety-nine returned owner, twenty-three adopted, and two euthanized. With a ninety-nine point zero nine percent live release rate, we currently have fifty-eight dogs, including fifty-one adult dogs and seven puppies. A hundred microchips have been done, ninety-eight pre-vaccinations from clinics, eleven other vaccinations, fifteen neutered, and twelve spayed. Want to kind of give you an update on some things they've done during the Boyle's Fire. They stepped up and responded down to the center that we had established at Frontines. I know the director actually spent three days in his truck, like a hotel, and he said he didn't want to take up the space for any people that needed a place to stay. They've done well over a hundred calls for service, they're still calculating that, because calls are still coming in. They're still calculating, well over a hundred calls. There was one boarding, three transports, twenty-five food and water were given out. Nineteen others, which were like people just calling, needing questions or directions, or anything of that nature. Forty bags were given out to the food pantry, they also delivered food to the LAC to be given out. They set up the temporary shelter, provided food and supplies, crates, bowls, staff on site. Washed and cared for numerous animals while citizens needed access to the Red Cross services, and provided information and evacuation regarding homes and animals.
Any questions, any counsel?
Thanks. Well, they were saying that, that one day was already there, then they were bringing in another vehicle, and stuff like that, they didn't want us to ask them.
Yeah, actually, I do have a question. We had a pretty big case, I think, years went out, animal control and collected, a bunch of dogs and things that were kind of abandoned, abandoned property. I heard something in the neighborhood, over ten, fifteen dogs, a couple of weeks ago, out in the, in the Parkwood subdivision. No? Okay, thank you.
Lieutenant, I think they were very shy during the fire, so please give them our thanks.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item two, presentation of a proclamation declaring September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four as Native American Day. Whereas on Native American Day, we acknowledge and honor the first peoples of Lake County and Clear Lake, who exemplify the values of all those in our community, they bring their resilience, compassion, and strength. And whereas Lake County has been home to people for more than twelve thousand years. And the originally diverse cultures of the tribal nations indigenous to Lake County and Clear Lake have influenced every aspect of our community's history. And whereas Native Americans have helped make our community stronger and will prosper. Whereas we celebrate the richness of the city's unique tribal history and traditions and the impact Native American cultures have, have had on every American. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Clear Lake City Council does hereby call upon all citizens to recognize the special contributions to Native Americans, contributions Native Americans have made to our city, and salutes those who have sought to honor the important role of tribal leadership in our city's past, present, and future. Signed today, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. And I believe we have a meeting with the Eagle Tribe coming up here, I think this would be great, and hand off to them. Moving on to public comment, this is the time for any member of the public to address the city council on any matter that is not on the agenda, that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act, with limited exceptions, does not allow the council or staff to discuss issues brought or funded publicly. Here in the chamber, we'll limit your comments to three minutes, if you're on Zoom, please leave a comment in the chat feature there, and Madam Clerk will read it after we handle all the comments here in house. Does anyone have, would anyone like to make a public comment? Yes, just don't worry. I mean, please just state your name, and we go in, city residents. Once a week, so that our Zoom folks can hear.
Okay. Marietta O'Connor, I live in Clear Lake. I would like to know all the work that's been done around roads and digging and all that kind of stuff. Are the taxpayer going to be charged any of that?
So, all of this project?
Yeah, so all the projects are largely from taxpayer, or taxpayer-funded, either the state or the city, there's different measures that fund all of these.
Right now, all these projects are funded, so it's from past taxation that is covering all the work that's being done.
Oh, so no new, nothing?
At the moment, no, no new taxes are being suggested.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, my name is Evelyn De Dallas, I live in Clear Lake. The sprinklers you have around the lake is great. It's taking that smell away and everything, you guys are the excellent job. Okay, I have one comment. I don't want to say where they live, where they kind of, but if you have somewhere that knows, there's an RV, and then there's another RV in the yard, so isn't that against the law?
Potentially. If you could, if you want to talk with Lieutenant Peterson here, in the back, give him the address, and he can clarify.
But then they'll say who told them. Because there's a lot of traffic going in and out, and, you know.
Whatever you're comfortable sharing with the lieutenant, they'll do so, we'll be appointing contact right now. Don't want to answer from the die soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments here in the chamber? Seeing that Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, I will close the public comment. And we will move on to the consent agenda. Is anyone from the council, if you want to pull an item?
Mr. Mayor, before you get to that, item number three was in a burning left, on the last meeting, the council approved that item, so if you can pull that.
Any additional items pulled from council? Is any member of the public want to pull an item? Madam Clerk, anyone on Zoom?
There's no one on Zoom that wishes to pull an item, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
We'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item number three.
I have a motion from councilmember Sloop, and a second from Vice Mayor Overton, please vote me in your favor.
I would like to comment on item four, and thank those that serve on the vector control board, have done so month to month, and it's something that I greatly appreciate your service.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Councilmember Pirda. Moving on to item eight, an update on the Boyle's Fire, to the man in the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Sloop. Just wanted to give the council an update, have a discussion about anything more related to this, but, so we'll start back at the beginning. Just over a week ago, although it seems like a lifetime ago at this point, the Boyle's Fire broke out, it's on the afternoon, ultimately, consuming a little bit over eighty-one acres on the eastern part of the city, at one point, we had over four thousand residents evacuated with over nine thousand in the city without power for significant period of time. Total structure loss ended up being fifty-seven, seven damage. Do I need this talking out loud, Madam Clerk? Twenty-five dwellings were completely destroyed, and three had significant damage. Seventy-nine vehicles were destroyed. The initial damage assessment that we submitted, I guess, well, I don't really submit it at this point, honestly, if it was this week, or I think it was the end of last week. We submitted an update today with some initial information, but with public and private property damage, we're estimating at just over thirteen point six million. Most of the impacted residents are primarily working families. And unfortunately, the insurance ratio for most of those folks, with information coming through the WAC, is about seventy-five percent, either have no insurance or underinsured. But we can talk about that more later. No public information is shared at this point on the mission, the investigation related that is ongoing. I would like to say there's been very widespread rumors that this was ignited by a homeless camp, which is not very, okay, so. I think it was interesting, there are a few areas of the fire where you can really see the value of actual vegetation mitigation efforts around residences and other areas that made it much easier for firefighters to save those homes, so it is very important, it does work. The fire did make it onto the middle school and community college campuses, but no building damage. There was some damage to solar array, city middle school, but primarily significant smoke damage and that type of thing had to be cleaned with the campus. I think combined at this point, somewhere in the neighborhood of six hundred, six hundred fifty thousand of impacts to those two properties. There is very significant vegetation management that needs to happen around the campus, that really should have happened previously. Fortunately, the fire crews were able to stop it in spite of some of that, so fire marshal has done a very thorough job of analyzing those properties, as well as the hospital, and submitted reports each of those agencies on what needs to be done, and we're actively working with them to try to help them make sure that that happens, whether it's through possibly some state funding or through local organizations, including Environmental Research Center. Working on a number of things that could include a direct partnership between the city and Lake County Fire Protection District and so forth. So, you know, obviously, the fire's out now, we'll focus on recovery, all save the details from the local assistance center that happened, took up most of this week to Director Swanson near the moment, but so the Caloes watershed protection team did a site assessment on Monday morning, so they have a team that came, and they want to try to determine what needs to be done to keep hazardous ash and whatnot, hazardous debris from the fire from making it into the watershed. So, you know, we walked areas with them, they're going to be putting a report together on what they recommend, and then submitting that back to us, and if it ends up being a state declared disaster, the state will be coming in and helping with some of that work. Fortunately, we don't have any severe or any forecast at this point. What they call the Phase One cleanup is household hazardous waste. That's been delayed a little more than normally happens in disasters, they'd like to get that done as soon as possible, because it's not really safe for residents to go back and, you know, access their property until they have the opportunity to clean up. That is going to start on Monday at eight AM, so they're coordinating that in partnership with Lake County Environmental Health. That process could last up to two weeks. But they will be removing any hazardous waste, household, you know, a lot of the stuff, batteries from vehicles and that type of stuff moving in from the property. And that's the phase one, and it's kind of like, you know, you can kind of turn it over to the property owners, basically. Or ideally, if this becomes a state declared disaster, or included in a state disaster declaration, that the state will actually come in and do that cleanup, and it won't be a responsibility to the property owners, but at this point, we still don't know that's going to happen. So additionally, on Monday, Caloes and Small Business Administration will be sending a team to do private property site assessment. So, there's a threshold of twenty-five destroyed or significantly damaged homes for the SBA to provide private property owners very favorable numbers of loans to rebuild their homes. Because the numbers that we have are right in that area, that they are coming to do a site assessment and verify the numbers that we've submitted to them. You know, we think that, you know, we're pretty confident our numbers, so we think it's definitely going to be above the twenty-five, but, you know, they're going to come out and do that assessment. And then tomorrow, Caloes will be doing a public property damage assessment. And so they'll have a team on site that will review what we've submitted as far as public property damage, so there's really four, four things at this point, there was some fairly significant damage to our road infrastructure from some of the dozers right there at the top of Damred Extension, I'm sure if you've been through there, you've noticed that, so that's one of them. We did reach out to all of our utilities, this is primarily Conca County or District, so they did share some damage with us, relatively small, we currently place that as about twenty-five thousand. But we'll be taking a look at that, and then the other public facilities, of course, are the college and middle school, so also be doing assessment there, most of the damage is really cleanup, smoke damage cleanup and that type of thing. But that will be happening tomorrow, and then really the results of that assessment is what will give Caloes the information they need to make some disaster declaration related to this event. You know, there's, again, no significant known damage to the utility infrastructure, other than what I mentioned earlier, but you know, I think this does certainly raise the issue again, that a lot more long-term investment in our infrastructure in many areas, including this one, the battery needed, very few fire hitters in that area, footprint. Just a couple of final things, so, you know, like with some of the other events, like sulfur fire, were included in the federal declaration, and we got a number of CPG disaster recovery funds, and we've got a lot of funding for that, which has been pretty transformative in a number of ways related to infrastructure and some housing projects. The problem with that is it takes so long for that process to happen, that it's, you know, four years or something before or after, that's when we actually see the money, and there's a lot of requirements on making sure that the use of those funds is tied directly to those who are impacted by the disaster, but unfortunately, four years to those who are impacted by the disaster, but unfortunately, four years after an event like that, folks that really needed the assistance, you know, fell through the cracks or figured it out a different way. So, of course, we did share that concern with Congressman Thompson when he was on site last Saturday, as well as the state, and, you know, Senator Rebarre in particular has been extraordinary in, you know, helping us and trying to be a resource, we would have been weekly calls with him, his staff, and he's been making sure that the Office of Emergency Services Director, Nancy Warren, is actually in each of those conversations as well, you know, which is something that probably wouldn't happen without him, because, you know, she's the director of point of view governor. So anyway, it's definitely ensuring that those impacted and what's happened here with the Boils Fire is not forgotten at the state level, and I'm looking forward to continued coordination with the Senator Rebarre, and CalOES really has an army of people prepared to help us. I did want to specifically point out, while this is entirely within the city and the responsibility falls on us for recovery, CalOES manager for the county, or not CalOES, the county emergency services manager has been extraordinarily helpful in lending any resources that she can provide to us. So unless there's any questions on kind of that part, but I'd like to turn it over to Director Swanson.
And I want to thank you for that, and also echo your sentiments about how everybody came together, creating how you were able to get a hold of the senator or congressman and have them up here actually visiting the site. I had a question about the SBA loans after the Sulphur Fire, are you familiar with that? Lots of paperwork had processed, ultimately to be denied. I'd like to see if there was a way we could have some kind of oversight, I just don't want people to be led to believe that that's a for-sure thing, because it absolutely is not. It's very disappointing to go through all that process. We lost a house and...
Okay, well, I appreciate that information on the Sulphur Fire, every, with Cash Fire, that wasn't part of the program either, so I appreciate knowing that, and we'll make sure to ask those questions and make sure that, you know, what we do relate to the public is, you know, not unpromising.
Thank you.
All right, Director Swanson.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. As City Manager Flora stated, on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of this week, we partnered with the Department of Social Services for Lake County, we partnered with the Red Cross and CalOES for a local assistance center at the youth center. It was held from ten AM to seven PM on those days, and there were thirty state, federal, and local agencies and nonprofits there to assist those who were affected by the fire in many different ways, such as financial assistance, vital document replacement, food, pet food, as Lieutenant Peterson was saying, mental health services and onsite counseling. We served approximately three hundred and fifty people over three days. We also had one hundred and sixty households there for case management and assistance. We are working with North Coast Opportunities for Case Management for those families and individuals whose homes were destroyed or damaged in the Boils Fire. Really, it was a very good example of how a community can come together in a moment of need. People showed compassion to each other, kindness, and I'd like to ask our staff at staff meetings, you know, what's your why? Why do you work for the city of Clear Lake? You know, search yourself for why you want to be here, what you want to do, and to me personally, this week was a big part of my why, on the line of work here.
Thank you, Director.
A shout-out to Melissa, extraordinary job, extraordinary, thank you so much to organize that, and hope it really appreciated throughout the city, thank you again.
Thank you, council members.
Yeah, I mean, just to follow up to that, I mean, the, I couldn't be more proud of our staff, I mean, you know, the public doesn't always see all the things that happen and what is required to bring some type of assistance, you know, I mean, the short-term housing that the city is providing for folks with damaged or destroyed homes is not an obligation of the city, but it's the right thing to do, and our staff have jumped in over the last two weeks and have a pretty extraordinarily, extraordinary extra workload, very few things in their regular workload have been dropped off, and especially that first week there, you know, was a lot of people working here and they got very little sleep, and, you know, Acting Chief Snyder was, was, was pretty tired, and, you know, it doesn't always happen like that in a lot of communities, and I'm very proud of that.
Thank you. Councilman McCray.
I was going to wait for personal reports, but I go now, I want to echo what's been said already, I spent parts of all three days at the, at the LAC as one of the nonprofits, and our staff was absolutely extraordinary. Love your, your why, Melissa, Director Swanson. It made everything great, and Acting Chief, you were, you were Acting Chief, you kind of liked it, didn't you? And I think you had your sidekick, Officer Garrett was with you, Eric Kokas was with you also, that all of you, everybody I saw was out now keeping the place going or meeting staff, I think I saw Don all over the place, it was extraordinary, and I was very, very proud of our staff, all of you, thank you.
Thank you. Just to follow, also thanking you for getting the people back that were displaced back in their homes that weren't damaged or destroyed by the fire, that meant a lot to them to get back home as quickly as they, as they were, but back to business, if they missed the local assistance center, are they able to still go to DMV and take care of the, those things, and do we have that information available on website?
Absolutely, I didn't get a moment to put it on the website today, but I absolutely will tomorrow, and yes, I have contact information for all of the resources that were there this week.
When, when something big like that happens, sometimes you just have to kind of sit on yourself and figure things out, you may not be ready to come down those three days that it was open, so I appreciate that, it's still follow-up.
Yeah, and I mean, there's still contact that we have not made with all the folks that were impacted, so it could be a variety of reasons for that, but if you talk to anyone that still has some need, encourage them to reach out to City Hall and we'll, we'll connect them.
And even the, especially the support services for, hopefully our staff took advantage as well, having chaplains there and people that they could talk to is so beneficial. Appreciate that.
Well, thank you for the comments, I will now open it up to public comment, if you have a comment, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Frank Costner, resident of Twenty-Eighth and Boils, as well as General Manager of Conca County Water District. I really didn't plan on speaking tonight, but unfortunately, Alan, Mr. Flora was talking about the water district and it forced my hand to have to come up here. On Eighteenth, between Oak and Boils, in two thousand and fifteen, we invested over half a million dollars and put an eight-inch water line with fire hydrants every five hundred feet. If you go out on the Eighteenth Avenue and you look at where the fire crossed into our main area where the homes were, they just went right through where those hydrants were. And so I just want to say I'm very proud of the response that Conca County Water District did to the fire, just as you are proud of your employees and your people. I was just hoping a little bit of acknowledgement about the hard work that the water district has done over the past ten years in improving our district. We pumped more water during this fire than we've ever pumped before, over nine hundred gallons a minute, before our maximum capacity was about six hundred gallons a minute. So my heart goes out to everybody that lost their homes, I'm not trying to make this political, I do not want to compare to speak, but all of my crew immediately came in, we had all the crew there, Lower Lake, General Manager reached out to me, I'm sorry, so you're fine, Lower Lake, the General Manager reached out to me, Golden State reached out to me, Highlands reached out to me, we all, everybody was asking if I needed any help, my whole crew was working, we kept water in the tanks, we kept pressure in all of those hydrants. Currently, we're working on six point five million dollars of infrastructure improvements with Antias, a new pipeline, Dam Road with fire hydrants, so just a little bit disappointed that there couldn't be, because of all the political issues between water districts and the city, that there couldn't be any acknowledgement of the hard work that the water district has done.
So I know you came in a little late, I, in my opening statement, I certainly acknowledged all that hard work that you guys did, you know, the utility companies, water companies, PG Union, we all came together, and I truly appreciate all the work your staff did. We saw you guys, they were working the butts off, so thank you, and please thank your staff for us.
I appreciate that, I really do, because we...
And I feel that as well, frankly, you guys didn't get much sleep.
Yeah, we care about this community, I was evacuated, my neighbors were evacuated, you know, board members live in, in the district, you know, there are elected officials just like yourself who live in their own community, so we're very proud, and also our hearts, it breaks our hearts that, you know, we would love to have a fire hydrant every hundred feet, I mean, you know, I mean, I, I was thinking I was going to come home to my house and go, you don't think I want fire hydrants, I, I lived where I worked, and so, like I said, I really didn't plan on coming up and speaking during this, but I, I know Alan did reach out to me the day after the fire, asked me if there's anything I needed, and I appreciate that, you know, anyways, is life, did it, your life?
Probably, but I, I wanted you to highlight the great work of him.
So I just, I just, you know, it is devastating that the, the community is affected like this, and, and it's nothing that I want to see, you know, it's heartbreaking, these, these are my, my customers, and if the fire had burned my home, I would be underinsured, and I probably need to do some mitigation measures around my home, I mean, I don't have any weeds or anything, like trees probably need to be trimmed, but anyway, so I just want to thank you for your time, and appreciate, you know, the city and the staff who reached out to me, and we're going to meet tomorrow and go over, and, and I'm sure Alan's going to work to try to, we have very little loss compared to, I mean, it's nothing compared to what everyone else is dealing with, so thank you very much.
Frank, if you live on Twenty-Eighth, there's a follow-up to this thing, the brothers are so lucky, I had a couple years ago, I'm working on starting a fire-safe council, fire-wise community, if you'd be willing, when we get to that point, to maybe act as a spark point, as they say, in your specific area, and you're trying to get the fire-wise community going there, to do just the things you were just talking about, that resilience, hardening your home, and, and, you know, working with your neighbors to encourage them to do the same.
I would love to help, I mean, I'm very...
We'll reach out to you.
Community-oriented, I don't care about where I work in, in my city, so thank you.
Never counted.
Mayor, I'd love maybe to just respond briefly, so my intent in making the comment about, I don't know, fire hydrants wasn't meant to be a criticism specifically of Conca County Water District, I understand how hard everyone is working, did talk to General Manager Costner the next day, I talked to a number of his staff that were out there that evening while the fire was still burning around them, tried to shut off water valves and doing everything they could to make sure that water was being used in places needed. My comment around that is just that, you know, it's not just this area, there's a lot of areas, there's a lot of areas, and clearly, there's a lot of areas in other communities, but we have, the avenues area of Clear Lake is one of the few very high-fire hazard rated areas within the local jurisdiction, and there's just not enough hydrants, you know, that's one thing that needs to be worked on, is to say that they have done a great job of improving the plant and, you know, provide lots of water, but, you know, most of the water being put out is coming from tanker trucks, and I hope there's a day in the city where there's a lot more fire hydrants and a lot less vegetation in those areas, so we don't have to deal with this devastation for a few years.
Any other comments here in the chamber? And you will be doing this very much.
Not used to that. We're in a survive take city in Clear Lake, I just want to kind of bring this back, we have a county worker who lost their home during this fire, we have three teachers who were evacuated, luckily still have their homes, some of them damaged, we have students from Conca Unified School District who have been impacted and no longer have homes to go to, still expected to go to school, and so I just kind of want to bring it back to the individuals that were here to serve mutually, and all of the above that's been talked about earlier, about the collaboration, the coming together of agencies, all the stuff that Melissa worked on, and including all the other agencies that were at the LAC, all of the different fire districts that came from out of county, nobody knows the people that they were protecting, but we do, and those people still need our help, and I really appreciate how we come together during these times, it's one of those bittersweet moments where the worst brings out the best, so very thankful, really, and I see some fun, thank you.
Any other comments here in the chamber? Yes, ma'am.
Stephanie Hummel, and I'm from Clear Lake, and I was here for the, I, I would like to say thank you for the mail out that you sent out, I liked that, and it was really good that it had the open house, so I was here at the open house, and, and I was impressed that Mr. Mayor said that he would do the meeting first Thursday of the month, because there was a really, really, really good turnout, and I think it's really, really important, and I hope that we can still do that, so I just wanted to say thank you and let everybody know it was a really good turnout today, and I think the officers would be in there too, I know I left a little early because it got a little heated, so I didn't know if we were still going to do it.
Absolutely.
Bye, thank you.
And for some context, the city did have an open house scheduled for that date, and the fire happened, and we still hosted it, we just opened it up and covered it up, there were a lot of topics during that, and all the meetings that did come out, as you mentioned, as long as I'm mayor for the next couple of months here, I'm very much to continue that the first Thursday of every month at four o'clock, so I'll get some information.
Four o'clock or three o'clock?
They said, I think...
You said, I think you said three to five, but whatever you decide, because...
Whatever I put up, yeah.
I'm usually here on the meeting.
Thank you. Any other comments here in the chamber? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the council, the city manager, do you require any direction?
No. No, the only thing I was going to mention is we are, I mean, you know, the, the part that everyone's going to see a lot of this happening, right, there's an enormous amount of paperwork that follows for probably a few years, especially if there's state, state federal declarations associated with that, but we will do it because, you know, that's the right thing, every community needs the help. Um, there, we are planning with various agencies, doing debris hop wash type of thing here in a couple of weeks, just to while everything's so fairly fresh to talk about what we can do better next time. So I just wanted to share that. But other than that, I don't think-
Thank you, city manager. All right, moving on to item nine, discussion regarding water services. Anyone want to sit? Back to the city now.
Okay, well, um, we don't have a s-
Can you guys hear in the back? There's a lot of background noise in the lobby here.
We can't shut the door.
We can't shut the door, Frank.
I'd like to come forward.
Uh, but if you guys want to move up so you can hear a little better and we can try to speak a little louder.
Probably could close it over a little bit so I can see less noise.
No, it's, it's a public meeting, so.
You can't move behind the log, it doesn't have to be cool. So, okay, um, uh, I, so we don't have a speaker range for tonight, so we, so we can be talking for a little bit more. And I actually haven't had a lot of time to prepare, um, a lot of remarks, so I thought I would just give the council some updates on a few things that are going on, address any questions that you may have. So, um, kind of really two, two main areas of discussion. Uh, as you know, there's been a bit of a saga with, um, the shareholder election that Highlands Mutual Water Company had in April. There's been a number of times in court, um, and, uh, a few different court orders related to that. And ultimately, what we're looking at is, uh, a new shareholder election that will be happening on September thirty at ten o'clock in, um, Lower Lake. So there's a few things that are different about this election than, um, what had been attempted previously. Uh, I'm sure all, all of you know, uh, based on the judge's order, that shareholders are, um, people who own property within the boundaries of Highlands Water Company. Previously, or at least for some period of time, um, elections have been, uh, shareholders have been considered customers of the company that had existing fire connections. So that, that, um, sort of unveiled a, a number of issues. There's a lot of discrepancies and, um, uh, just sort of issues with where the actual boundary of Highlands Water Company is. Um, and so there was kind of a lot of back and forth. And, uh, we did end up working together. Highlands is represented by some new attorneys now, which has dramatically changed the ability to, to work with them. So that's good. Uh, but the, the shareholders, there's a much larger number than, than previously. And, um, it's going to be a bit confusing for folks because, um, in fact, there's eight or nine hundred properties that are also within Conca County Water District that are within Highlands Water District. They're considered shareholders and will be given the opportunity to vote, um, in the Highlands election, even though, you know, some percentage of those actually, you know, pay and receive water for Conca County Water District. But, but nonetheless, this is moving forward. Um, you know, if, if you wanted to get into it, we've done a, a number of maps, uh, related to the boundary. I think we have a good idea of where the, the boundary really is, at least for the purposes of the election. Um, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of updates to that boundary, um, after the election. But, um, you know, there's a number of properties that have been served by Highlands for a number of years, which have never been in their boundary. Um, and then, of course, there's a lot of properties that, you know, for example, most of Ferns Valley area is, are considered shareholders. And, uh, a lot of that area is, is, you know, served by wells and not by, by the water company. So kind of a lot of confusion there, um, you know, not to dwell on this too much, but this is one of the difficulties, I believe, with mutual water companies where you have no regulatory agency that oversees boundaries, um, like Lafco oversees the boundary for Conca County Water District, Public Utilities Commission oversees the boundary and other things for Golden State Water Company. Um, there isn't that situation. It's, um, changed by a vote of the board, by a meeting there by laws, um, with no notice to shareholders. Um, you know, our hope is that some of those practices and history there will change. Um, and this is kind of started dribbling out this week as far as some public information. So some of you may have seen it around this. But, uh, while there's a lot of signs around town about a city takeover and that type of thing, um, what's actually happening in this election is there's a group of shareholders that have gotten together and decided that they want to, um, see a different approach at the company that they're part of. So, um, there's a, a new slate of, of board members that will be. The, the election process is very strange with corporate elections like that. So you don't, you don't have ten people on the ballot and the highest vote getters win. The way it's been presented is the existing board of Highlands Water Company is being presented as a slate. Um, and although it's very difficult, um, to overcome sort of the mechanisms associated with that, there is a group of five other people, um, who think that, um, there needs to be some changes there. And so, um, they have created a website and I think they're, they're sending out some, some information. You'll see more about it around. But, um, the, uh, business owners and individuals that are involved in this are, um, Dennis Starling, um, Ray Silva, Henry Bornstein, Denise Lustelmo, and Thomas DeWalt. So those are the, the five folks who are going to be running. And, um, you know, I think with the experiences that, uh, the city has had, um, we'll be doing what we can to support their cases. Um, that's kind of all I have around that issue, um, unless-
So, as I understand, the court is wanting to oversee the election at their front?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's true. Um, there is essentially a referee, um, that will be overseeing that election process. So, um, attorney represented by the city and attorney representing Highlands Water Company, um, essentially ended up agreeing shares of names. And there's a, um, attorney out of Sacramento that specializes in sort of corporate law and these type of elections, um, that has been agreed to by both parties and the judge agreed to, agreed to that.
Any questions from the council on this side? Or this part, yeah. Seeing that, uh, okay.
Um, so the other thing that, you know, I wanted to share some information about, I think I briefly mentioned, that's me that we had, but, um, coordination of construction projects. Um, as you know, um, we're currently undertaking sort of the largest scope of road construction projects ever in the sys, in the city's history, eighteen miles right now. Which are grouped in kind of three project areas. So we have what we call the ballpark project, which is south of Red Buck Park, including that area down there. That is Highlands Water District. Um, there's very small, uh, Conca does have some infrastructure right there along the park, as you know, but, but not many impacts there. Um, and then, um, the tree streets over here, uh, South Olympic is in Golden State's territory. And then the areas of the Clear Lake Park also in Golden State's territory. So, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult to coordinate some of these projects. Um, and, you know, on smaller projects, we haven't ran into the scope of issues until the, you know, previously until this year, and we're doing a lot more than normal, which is good. And, you know, the community really wants that road space, as you know, and we're doing everything again to put as much asphalt out there as possible. But, you know, this resolves in conflicts because we, um, do not have control over any of the utilities in the city sewerable water. Um, and so, you know, we, uh, we plan out through our Measure B five year plan, um, what projects are going to be implemented. Um, we do share that through utility coordination meetings with, uh, water districts, special districts, AT&T, PG&E, all the utilities in attempt to give an idea of where we're going. And then, you know, once we move forward, um, and start working on design plans, I believe, uh, our practice is once we have thirty percent plans is when we actually, you know, set the utilities for review and move through. And the plans are approved, we work the contract, um, and move forward. Um, so, you know, um, I'll just explain some of the situations that we've run into this year. So we'll start with the ballpark project. So that again is in Highlands's territory. There's a number of, um, undersized and very old, uh, water infrastructure in that area. As we uncovered that, um, you know, there's leaks, there's issues, uh, Highlands determined that they would try to replace about a hundred and thirty lineal feet of the pipe, um, cover the rest of it up and hope that it lasts five years beyond our payment cut warranty. Um, and fixing the first hundred and thirty feet became difficult for them to sort of tie that new stuff into the old stuff. It kept bleeding along, and, you know, we didn't really like the idea of, you know, praying for it to last five years. Uh, because, you know, whether it happens in a year or six years from now, we're still going to have a pretty good road there that we hate to have cut up, built, that had a lot of damage and replacement. So, uh, fortunately, our team in coordination with Highlands Water, um, they did, uh, look at, you know, so, well, there's a few things that happen. One, when, when you're in the middle of a project and you're moving forward and you have to pivot and start replacing the infrastructure of the street, it causes delays to our road project too, which costs us money. Um, and so, you know, we don't like that. And, you know, we were, now we started a little later on these projects than we normally like to. And so now we're, we're looking at, are we going to go get these done this winter? Um, in this case, it, it's ended up working out fairly well. Highlands did decide to replace all of those water mains with new mains, which is really good. Um, they also decided to use our contractor to do the work, which means that contractor is able to continue working. And it's not, even though they're not working on our part of the project right now, they're not going to be charging us till late time. So that's good. Um, the, the other two projects have, um, are, we, we, we still don't know exactly where we're going on these. Um, the, the infrastructure in both of those areas, um, is, is not well documented. Um, what's documented is, uh, you know, unfortunately not very accurate. Uh, we have water mains as shallow as four inches below existing grade in some areas. Um, industry standard is three feet plus. Um, and so, uh, you know, another issue for us is what we like to do for these. So, you know, as you know, there's different levels of road conditions. Clear Lake Park is a good example where, you know, some of the streets up here, um, were not in horrible shape and some were. Um, and so there's different types of treatment that is done. It's obviously a lot cheaper, um, to do some work to a street that's in relatively good condition, one that's completely gone. Um, what we've been doing for the last few years on our projects is, uh, a process is called full depth renovation. So, you know, former process was we come in, you grind up the street, the subgrade that is hauled off, disposed of somewhere. New subgrade is brought in, compacted, paved on the top. This process is quite a bit more efficient, um, and potentially more durable in the sense that the grinder grinds it up, mixes cement with the subgrade, puts it right back in and compacts it. That sets, there's some other things that happen, that sets for a period of time and then the asphalt is laid over the top of that. It's very stable subgrade. So this, we believe, is the best long-term solution for these roads. Because, you know, for all of us sitting here, this is the last time any of these roads are going to be under treatment, right? It's just, we're going to be focusing on other areas. So this is the time to do it right. Um, the difficulty that we've run into is when you have the shallow infrastructure, um, there's a mix of it. There's, um, there's steel pipe, there's asbestos pipe, um, there's some pipe that has been replaced with, you know, PPC and other stuff. So there's a mix of it out there. There's a lot, some areas have a lot of abandoned pipe. They just left pipe in the street, um, put new pipe in. That's not uncommon, especially for asbestos pipe, because there's, you know, some of the process you have to go through to remove, dispose of that type of pipe problem. It's also more fragile, some of this older infrastructure. So the compaction process with FTR, not only is there apparently significant depth excavation, but, um, you know, there's a lot of vibration associated with it that can cause damage to infrastructure on the street when we're doing this work. Um, and so we've been working through scenarios. Some stuff Golden State had, the French, I'll, I'll step back and say the franchise agreement that we have with Golden State says that, um, if they have infrastructure that's in the way of our road right of way or our road project, is their responsibility to move out of the way. And, but, you know, they still had some concerns. I mean, you know, it's some, it's a lot of expense, it's time delays. We told them that per the franchise agreement, we would expect any time delays that are borne by us or change orders related to them happy to move their stuff out of our way, we expect it to be borne by Golden State Water Company, not the city tax payers. One, uh, scenario that has been talked about over the last week or so is to do a different type of road treatment where we have, we grind the glass, we have less of base and increase the amount of asphalt. Uh, which, you know, can still be a good treatment, but is expected to have at least five years less ultimate lifespan. So that's not something that we really like when we're doing this the one time it looks in all of our careers, right? And so I, I don't know. We, we, um, we've met with them a number of times. Um, we had some concerns related to this and we're, um, you know, kind of interested in considering the direction of, uh, this different treatment in order to avoid, um, impacts to infrastructure. We still have a lot of concerns, you know, there still could be damage. It's still shallower than it should be. Um, and we don't want to have to cut our streets up in a few years. And so we did present an agreement to them, um, that would outline the parameters in which we would consider doing this other treatment. Um, I found out yesterday that they, they have no interest in, in signing that agreement. And they're telling us that, um,
This is Golden State?
This is Golden State. And, uh, you know, they will follow their obligation to move the infrastructure out of our way. Um, and so, you know, while that appears it's going to be significantly more costly for them, not only are they going to have to remove and replace a lot more infrastructure, um, delays that we're charged for related to our construction, which could extend, um, into next year, um, we would expect to be borne by it as well. Um, so we're still kind of working through, um, alternatives on this, but, you know, it's, it's kind of a big deal. I just wanted to kind of share with the council, um, one thing that is, um, you know, frustrating. Not that, you know, if these were all city utilities, that, um, there wouldn't be any of these conflicts. I mean, we're still dealing with stuff that, you know, no one did right the first time in a lot of cases. I mean, we just have to acknowledge it. And, you know, it's no one's fault. It's in the room right now perhaps. But, you know, there was a lot of crazy stuff that happened around here. People just took their back and put in water lines. Um, and now, now we're dealing with that and trying to grow up into a real city and it's not very easy a lot of times. So, um, with that, um, I'll just try to address any questions you have. Thank you, councilman, for putting on.
Yeah, reverse engineering in subdivisions is difficult, so please, but just a quick question. How much notice did we provide Golden State that we're going to be paying the tree streets?
Well, I mean, the first time we would have talked about this was over two years ago.
Right.
Um, you know, I mean, they, they say, well, you know, we didn't really have the plans until later. And, you know, we did have a bit of a discussion about, well, you know, it's probably not the best practice to wait until you have the hundred percent set of plans and then try to, to figure out what you're going to do. Um, it, you know, the more investigation you can do when you know that this stuff is coming, I think would be beneficial for all of us. And, I mean, another challenge that they have is, you know, they dug up their old plans and said, you know, we have, oh, this month, this vein here is three feet deep. It's good. And then they go out there and start digging and it's, you know, eight inches or ten inches. Um, so they're just not accurate either. So, uh, that's a difficult thing to deal with at this point. But, um, you know, the more, that's why, you know, we do all the surveying, you do the USA stuff, but you still have to go out there and do hot hauling and actually figure out where the things are.
Just a follow, um, i- is there any- Just to follow, is there any, I don't want to depend for the time that we're delayed in this process, and we already have our money ready to go to pay for the full depth reclamation and the longer longevity of our product. So, compromising that is not being a denominator in seeing the city do.
Well, you know, we did talk about it. I mean, you could ask our public brochure or project manager, he's very resistant to even discussing that type of option. But, you know, we also hate the idea of that project sitting there all winter, like it is right now, basically. It's, you know, they're going to have to try to winterize it somewhat, but you have it all ground up, tore up, all this dirt, I mean, it's going to be a horrible business if, you know, they spend the winter trying to replace these water lines and then we can't get in and do the paving until spring.
It's just both the tree streets and the park?
Well, it's, there's fewer issues in the park. There are some issues, but the level of complexity is much more significant in the tree streets at this point. Councilor Wilson?
So, they did not do any hot hauling at all?
I don't know if I can answer that. I don't know if one of you want to address. I would expect some was done.
Golden State or the contractor?
Golden State.
I would assume they did some because they did replace probably, I don't know, like a thousand lineal feet of water main out there on some of the streets.
Is that in the park or isn't it?
In tree streets.
Yeah.
When you saw the work on Olympic, that very...
Yeah. Case actually has been doing about $2 million with the work and some water lines up there. They didn't tie it on Olympic. There's a lot of just unknown abandoned utilities out there, there's a lot of unknown depths out there. I don't know how much investigation Golden State did.
I mean, there are other ways to find out how deep some utilities are. There's ground penetrating radar and all those kind of things.
Yes.
The idea that, that, and we try to figure out how deep those are.
Oh, we actually got GPR out on Clear Lake Park, and it's been working great.
It hasn't been used on the tree streets.
Not on the tree streets, but in Clear Lake Park we have been...
So, the city did not go...
No, the contractor did.
The contractor?
Our contractor did.
To verify that he was able to, on X, do the design?
Yeah, there's about five or six streets on Clear Lake Park where the water lines need to be lowered because they're too shallow.
Right.
Thanks.
City Manager, you gave us a timeline. Is that your estimate or is that Golden State's estimate to get all that infrastructure moved in our question?
But, don't recall giving you a specific timeline.
You didn't give a specific, that's why I'm asking. You said it could last into next year. Did Golden State give us a timeline?
Well, I mean, I think, I don't think we have anything specific yet. I mean, maybe Ms. Hayes can address that a little bit more specifically, but, I mean, right now, we're even concerned about getting the paving done if we're still moving forward right now, this winter or so.
We are unsure about the scope of work that Golden State would have to do at this time. We're still investigating. But it is pretty easy to surmise that the project would go into next year because the last three years have been pretty rain-heavy. Can't really FDR and pave during those times.
Golden State's a fairly large company. Are they limiting the work to the resources they have here in coming, or are we expecting a giant task force to come in to get this done?
I would not expect a giant task force. They have talked about using our contractors though.
I mean, they're using, they've been using some local contractors for the work that they've been doing. And, I mean, according to the sort of local team, they basically expended, you know, their budget on the work that's been done already, it's been allocated to this area, but in my discussions with the sort of regional manager yesterday, that didn't seem to be their biggest concern. And, I mean, I, you know, in understanding from Mr. Roscoe, who used to run similar companies, you know, there's sort of the district budget and then there's the company budget, you know, he wouldn't expect there to be a shortage of resources to get the work done if they wanted to, but it's just a matter of time to do it.
Councilor Perdott?
I guess on the, no, the run lines down Olympic and they teed off onto each of the T streets, how far into the T streets, and are those lines as far as they go, they're down to the depth they should be?
They go from Olympic to Walnut on the streets that they did for worse things, and they should be three foot or more down. And that's per their standards.
So, they're on each of the tree streets so far as they go?
They didn't do every single one. I can't remember exactly which ones they did off the top of my head, but...
I mean, you know, we did talk offline or whatever about some of the specifics of this, that wasn't really the point, but just, you know, this is not a great situation. I want to make sure the council was aware of the complexity.
Councilor Perdott? I think this is exactly the right time to be talking about this out in the public because as much criticism as we get about our streets, people that are living in, on those tree streets and all those connectors, they're going to have a muddy mess come January, February, if we can't get this done. And we've been planning, again, we have all our finances, all our engineering done. The other thing I'd like to know, and I don't think you're going to be able to answer this, do we need to move meter boxes? I've been looking at the, you know, progress. Roadways seem much narrower than what I would expect the prolongations of each roadway to be for our rightaways. And I know that, oops, in the Ballpark project, some meter boxes need to be moved because they're actually in the roadway. And I love the public comment that it's our fault that meter boxes are being covered by asphalt there in the street instead of looking at who's actually responsible, which was the water company placed them in the wrong place. So, I'm worried about the folks in the tree streets. Again, I think we do need to have these conversations.
Is it on that line? Can I answer the first question?
Please.
Yes, water meter boxes are being moved and we are identifying those and working with Golden State and Highlands to get them moved. And that has been going well, actually.
Those are the responsibility of the utility to raise and lower.
Correct. Correct.
Frank, go a little bit further on that one. Remember Perdott's comment about leaving these streets in the condition they're in now? I mean, they look like they're down six, eight, 10 inches in cases. That's not going to be money, that's just going to be a river.
So, on tree streets, they ground down four inches from existing, the big cuts that you're seeing is for the curving intersections.
In fact, at the moment, that's all the questions here from council. I'll open it up to public comment. Yes, just go for it.
Frank?
Welcome back. It's a public charity. Conoco City, Clear Lake. Covered a lot of topics. It's going to be really hard to cover all of them in three minutes, so I'm just going to do my best. So, Conoco County Water District is governed by LAFCO, so our district boundaries are set, they're known. You can go on the LAFCO webpage, they're all there. There does need to be some adjustments, in fact, they should have been done at the last, the last MSR that was done, when we did do some boundary adjustments.
What's MSR?
It's Municipal Service Review.
Thank you.
So, anyway, so, Conoco Water, we do have, there's, Highlands has some overlapping boundaries with Conoco County Water District, and so, I'm sure Highlands is going to clean those up after this election. You know, I think this is a new thing that came to their attention. I'm not sure that they realize how, you know, because before it was just each person that had a meter was a shareholder, and so it's a little different. I have confidence, you know, I can't speak for Highlands, but I have confidence that they're going to clean that up. Just want to, just talk a little bit about what are some of the water projects that Conoco Water District's been doing and road issues. So, we are, we have replaced the line, this inferior line that was on Dam Road. So, it was a four-inch PVC line, and it didn't even go all the way into the end of Dam Road. And so, since we did a 2.5 million dollar project and we replaced that four-inch PVC line with no hydrants, and now there's an eight-inch line with 150 PSI that goes all the way to the end of the dam road. And I just want to update the council on our emergency inner ties that we're doing.
But please switch off that, can you just ask the question? Would that be sufficient to allow for development up north there and all those vacant lots?
It would extremely help, yeah, so it's going to help, you know, all the homes on Dam Road will be able to connect, so as far as like...
I assume those connect, but we obviously have a lot of vacant lots to the north of that. Does the increase flow out there eventually?
It will, I mean, eventually water lines, that will be a good trunk line, that they can extend water lines from that into that area. So, we do have an eight-inch water main that goes from 18th all the way down through the apartment complex, the Cass Creek apartment complex, and then goes, ties into that new water main. And then we also have a six-inch water main that goes down Boils and ties in at Conoco, so they are looped. And so, that eight-inch is a good trunk line for future development. So, the inner tie project that we're working on, that's currently working on now, if only we would have had that during the fire, because that would have allowed us to pump an additional 400 gallons of paint from the Lower Lake Water District into our district. And so, unfortunately, at this time, you know, when we had the worst fire that I've experienced in the avenues, both of our inner ties were out of commission because they're currently being rebuilt and constructed. Well, the new one and the old one. So, those are supposed to be completed by the end of the year, and that, like I said, that will allow us to pump 400 gallons of paint between Lower Lake and ourselves either way. There's a casing that now goes across the Lay Street Bridge that ties Lower Lake, that's going to tie Lower Lake in to Conoco. So, those are just some of examples of the resilience that we've been working on, trying to improve our district to help with the firefighting. And one other thing, just one more quick thing.
You're going to have questions too, so...
So, we did get a variance from the city of Clear Lake to shallow barrier portion of that eight-inch line because of the Native American artifacts. So, there was a few, so normally the water line would be at least 32 inches, so that's outstanding, it's a half mark, 32 inches deep. But I hope in the future, you know, in 15, 20 years when we're all gone, someone isn't complaining about Conoco Water and their subsstandard fallow water line on Dam Road that's only 17 inches deep. But it is a ductile iron line that is very robust, could probably handle walking, I don't know what it's going to look like in 30 years, 50 years from now, but anyways, so that's all I have.
I assume that's well documented, though.
It is, yes, it's very well documented.
The future selves here will all know. Councilor Perdott?
I have to commend you on that line. I think you've got a hydrant every 400 feet, you know, 3,200 feet of line.
Yes.
Eight of them in there. Is that line live now?
It is, it's online. All the hydrants are all active.
And were they used at all during the fire for filling tankers?
No, they were too far away. Basically, it was, you know, the fire mostly was on 18th, and so there was really not very good access to that area.
But it was supplying water that could be pushed out of the oil line?
It's all interconnected. Yeah, it's all there.
Looped.
Yeah, it's all there. Just one more thing, just real quick. So, what we did as part of that project, one thing I missed is that we were investing $330,000 for a pavement overlay. I know I talked a bit about that, so that's just some of the work that Conoco Water District and, you know, that's been working with the city to improve everybody's infrastructure. So, you know, we're very proud of that, and, you know, I think we're all helping each other, and so, you know, I know there's a lot of negative emotions and things going on, but I just also want to point out the positive aspects, you know, that I'm very proud of the work that Conoco Water's done and improving the infrastructure and helping. It's not just hydrants, hydrants are not the only thing that helps firefighting, you know, and we're kind of in the catch-22 where, you know, where the city council and the city wants us to invest in infrastructure, but then under the hand rates are too high. You know, you can't get grants for everything, so if we invest in more infrastructure, if we have a fire hydrant every 500 feet, our rates are going to go up. So, like, you know, you just got to realize that if the city owned the water districts and they put a fire hydrant next to 500 feet, you guys would be the one getting yelled at because your rates would be too high. So, you know, you just got to remember, it is, you know, the grass isn't always green or by owning the water districts.
Frank, we recognize those. But I also wanted to recognize you because when we were up working in the avenues and when we were doing the chip steel projects up there, we didn't have any, we didn't have these types of problems. And your crew was great, they worked well with us, and we had all the marijuana grows going on up there, people breaking into hydrants. It's how we work very well, you know, trying to protect your hydrants and your water, and we had a good, a good relationship that way. I agree, we need to shed emotions, we need to talk about business and how we can make things better, and, and, I agree with that, because I think we can make this a better place to live.
Senator, Councilor Wilson? We went to 150 PSI up there, and yeah, you've been to push it up, been those lots that are there, I'm sure. Yeah.
That's a very high guess.
Yeah, yeah. So, but you could push it up the hell of a, easier to the logic. I was trying to remember, how long ago was it that you first started on that inner tie with public? I was talking to our, way back when.
It's been a long time, you know, after the Lower Lake fire.
After the Green fire.
Yeah.
I'm glad that it is.
Yeah, and so, it's almost...
Usual.
It's right there.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you. Any other comments here in the chamber?
Get jealous, Frank's getting a little too much time.
You see, it took a little bit more time, so...
I'll be brief. I really appreciate hearing that you don't want to take the path of least resistance. What you're dealing with is the past haunting you, where people made the easiest decision on how to move forward and lay down the infrastructure that we currently have. That's even creating subdivisions, not just the water or the sewer or other things like that. And we don't want to create a situation where 30 years from now, they're like, what did they do? And so, thank you. It might be rough this year, but overall, it's the right decision to make, and I'm really happy to hear you guys saying that, because we made mistakes in the past, and today we're definitely showing that we're right.
Any other comments here in the chamber?
Stephanie Hummel, and I just, you know, he sort of said what I wanted to say, but it, you know, the biggest thing, and of course, I don't know how to say it, so I'm just going to say, the main thing is we want to lower bill, you know? And all these things that you guys are talking about, you know, my question sort of is, is all this going to raise the bills? I mean, I know, I see that it probably should or it does, but still, most important, you know, for us is being able to pay that bill that's, you know, gone up to $100, and now it's going to go more than $100, you know, so. And then I just, you know, I saw the roads over on the tree side there, and I know that those people are used to the bad roads and the water and stuff, but yeah, I really hope that you guys, that somebody can push it to be done, because you've got a couple months of some good weather still, so we're hoping.
Well, I think the issue here is that there's a lot of interest. It's a very complex situation, right? We want good water infrastructure, we want good road infrastructure, we want growth in the city so we can grow our tax base, and there's a lot of factors in that. Appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
One of the things I'd like to comment, and Frank, get my tongue out here, and Frank for bringing it up, but a lot of that money that's being spent, I think, is great money, other people's money, and obviously, we want to keep our rates low too, because we pay the same water bills that you guys are paying. So, that is a very big part. Does my crystal ball work any better than yours? Of course not. But we do need to improve that, and one of the things we've been talking about, or trying to talk about is, can we work and coordinate together to maybe get more access to grant money, so it isn't coming out of our pockets? We're using other people's money to improve our infrastructure and make a better city.
And that's why, you know, I'm a little interested in going to the water company and hearing all the stuff that they've got going, like this meeting that's going on and, you know...
You should.
Just, you know, like you said, I'm a concerned citizen. So, thank you for your...
I'm sorry.
Well, one quick comment on that. I mean, if you think about it, I mean, it just came to Boils Fire, what did you say, 75% of the people didn't have insurance?
No insurance or under. No insurance or underinsured.
That's probably a function of the cost of insurance. And, uh, so, and that's ISO things and all those kinds of things have to do with private loans and all those kinds of things too. So yes, you might have to pay a little more for water, but hopefully your insurance will.
Well, and as a former agent broker for fire insurance, uh, fire hydrants are very important when you're writing an insurance policy. If your home isn't within 500 feet of a, a fire hydrant, you can't get insurance. And that was 10 years ago. So today it's even worse. Um, insurance companies want you to have a fire hydrant at your front door. So that's one of the reasons why we're having these conversations because we recognize that. Um, and we recognize that Frank, that you and the other companies are doing everything they can. But we're trying to look at what's best for our community and those folks that are paying those rates.
And I, I will add, um, the Conackdy Water District is a special district. When's your next board meeting?
I'll be next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. And I'm sure it's on the website as well if you wanted to attend that.
Should it's public.
All right. Any other comments here in the chamber? Senator Bennett, any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I will bring it back to council and ask Mr. Flora, do you require any direction at this time?
Hey, Don, there is just one kind of final thing. The segue was perfect. I'm on the funding. I mean, I guess before I jump into that, I mean, we could talk about this for a long period of time, but at least from the city's perspective, um, there's a lot of, um, benefit to looking at the system as one system instead of three systems. Uh, right now there's three water treatment plants, um, operating and having one, uh, water treatment plant that can serve the whole system is going to provide a number of economies. Um, there's been some projects on the border of two different water districts where both water districts want a water main put into the new street, um, which doubles the cost of that. And those are the type of inefficiencies that force rates being raised. Now, Conackdy County Water District has the lowest rates in any of the systems in the city. And that's, and they've still been able to invest an enormous amount in their infrastructure largely because they've taken advantage of the strict state grants, um, to do that investment. That's certainly what, um, we would want to do in looking at a combined system. And I, I think we'll come back and do a little bit more of a presentation at one of the upcoming meetings on this. But I just wanted to point it out for all of you to start looking into and thinking about. Um, I'm not one that's the first proponent of additional taxes, but, um, there is going to be a proposition on the ballot in November, Proposition 4, um, which would be a bond issuance, state bond issuance that would create 10 billion investments. Um, if you read the, the headline, it's talking about impacts of wildfire flood drop, make sure you eat in other climate-related businesses. It focuses on climate on. Um, but a lot of what it really is focusing on is issues like this and funding for investment water systems. And so I really want us to, um, take a close look at that and potentially consider taking a position, um, in, in, uh, supporting folks voting for this.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Flora. Any other comments from council? If we'll move on.
Mr. Cosmo, if we'll move on.
Uh, in a moment. All right. Thank you all, uh, the discussion. Mr. Cosmo, thank you for your time as well. Uh, Senator Andrew.
Uh, just, just one thing, um, really that I wanted to bring up. Um, it is campaign season. Um, and, uh, there are rules on where candidates can put signs. Um, now, uh, with the sort of Highlands water election issue, there's been signs scattered and in my opinion blighting our community for several months that are put in a lot of places that all, all of which are violation of municipal code, even though we have not taken action against having a water company for doing that. But, um, it continues to get worse. There are signs, um, nailed to power poles, put in public right-of-ways, any areas that, uh, folks can find to, to stick those signs. And now I think what we're seeing more than normal is other candidates are, are following sort of that trend. And so just wanted to put it out there that, um, we're going to have to dial this back a little bit. And, um, so, you know, encourage candidates, um, you know, I know this is part of the process, um, you know, putting, uh, you know, asking a private property to put a sign on their property, of course, is what you need to do. You can't put them in parks. You can't put them in public right-of-ways. Um, and at some point if this continues, the city's going to have to start removing these signs and make them available to the candidates to put in appropriate location.
Councilmember Crager.
And also if a sign is properly posted on private property with the property owner's permission, I believe there are also penalties for people removing those signs and damaging them.
Pardon me, I didn't hear that, but I would like to hear that repeated. Is that possible?
Sure. If someone has placed, I'll speak up, Jeff.
Yeah, go ahead.
People, if you've placed your sign with permission from the property owner on the property, um, it is, it is against the rules for someone else to remove that sign without your permit, without the candidate's permission.
Thank you. Two years of your place on Conackdy.
Well, this is, this is not, sorry, this is not the time for public comment. I appreciate your, your experience, but this is, we're passing.
We're just talking about what's today.
What's that?
Talking about what's today and moving forward.
Okay.
And so, uh, continue, Senator Andrew. That's really all I have. Um, so with these signs, um, Director Swanson, I'm going to just ask you, for the, the council candidates, um, you've made them aware of the requirement.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Do you know if anyone makes the county candidates aware?
The registrar of voters' office goes over that information with them and also gives them the regulations for the city of Clear Lake, the city of Lakeport and the county, yes.
Thank you. And then City Manager Flora, for, um, the separate campaign, the, the, obviously the water company, um, before we start taking them signs, can you please get some correspondence out to them, just share with them the COVID situation? I don't want to be a digital marketing outside of that to get that information.
Absolutely.
All right. Um, Councilmember Crager, Councilmember Simmons.
Um, we had a LAPCO meeting that lasted about 15 minutes. So, uh, there was not much going on. They're continuing to work on the MSR for the fire department of the county, looking at boundaries, et cetera, too. Like, that's normal, MSR report. That's, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Crager.
I also sat through that lengthy meeting as the alternate. Um, I was actually surprised how quickly it was concluded. Um, and just also a reminder to the community, the, uh, Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce is having our new one. Tickets are still available for October 5th. Hope to get some sponsors and, uh, have a good time.
Councilmember Crager.
Uh, yes, uh, as a fire, I didn't attend a couple of meetings. I did attend the course finance meeting on a board of clerks. And, uh, next day I actually participated in a, um, tour that Fire Marshal, uh, Van Caster, clerk representative, D S, uh, and City Manager Flora, they invited to come along with us. Um, and we toured and that's, again, I think the manager spoke about an emphasis on fire, uh, fuel reductions along and around the two schools, the middle school of City Inn and also Woodland College. Um, that is a, is a priority and the hospital right, right there as well. And then as a secondary, uh, widening, uh, public right-of-way along Highway 53 on both sides. Going back actually needing permission for landlords to go back off the public right-of-way and on the private roads to further, um, further reduce the fuel load, a few of them from the highways, especially, uh, from, and that would be from 18th Avenue there up to Lake Shore or 40th Avenue. So that was, uh, mentioned to me in the consequence that I was at. Uh, I spent three days of the lack, uh, off and on throughout all three days representing Alarca as one of the, uh, nonprofits who were there. We met with, I don't know how many people we actually saw in Alarca. As, as Swanson said, uh, there were a lot of people going through there, a lot of people with, their hearts go out to, they need help. Uh, Alarca's had a reputation and a history of helping with financial assistance. And I think we're going to be, we're meeting next, uh, week. Councilmember Slodum is on that committee as well. And I will try to give some direction. We, we have raised a substantial amount of money starting to provide some, some, uh, relief for these folks as we can. That's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Uh, yes, I also turned the fires against, uh, the sexy, the people that lost their homes. Our prayers are out with them. Um, really did, out with that, just kind of trying to get our center back into situation. Hopefully we're on our way to being able to start, uh, restocking that and being able to open up our center here soon. Uh, and I attended, uh, Lightning's, uh, meeting. We are still looking for, we have a program that can help, uh, seniors and disabled, get, you know, the ones that need to get to grocery stores and stuff. But it is on a volunteer basis. They do get members of my age. So, you know, we're still looking for volunteers in our area. So if anybody out there is willing to spend some time, it's kind of, whenever it's convenient, we work out with the people. So, uh, you know, kind of just sitting at home, willing to give an hour or two here and there, you know, uh, please contact Lightning. We're definitely in, in need of some volunteer drivers around our town.
Thank you. Um, for me, I have a Visiting County meeting this week. I'm very pleased to hear that there's an uptick in, in clearly lodging and, and what we give to that, that group. It's a reflection of increased rentals and tourism here. Uh, so that, that's a wonderful sign. Um, I also just wanted to thank our recreation department. That circus is absolutely amazing and to have that annually here right inside our town. Um, our team's doing a wonderful job, bringing events for our youth, that, that, that big family member is over there. And that's really what we want that, that department doing. So thank you to them. And of course, I'm sure it's a, a multi-team effort to, to do stuff, all the works and making sure it's secure. So thank you all. That is all I have. Any future agenda items? Senator, we are now adjourned to closed session. Thank you all for joining us.